Okay, this meeting, I call to order. We've got several things on the agenda here for public hearings. First one is the Planning Commission zoning request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia, to solicit input on a zoning request. The Lee County Planning Commission has proposed a zoning plan for those areas previously located within the boundary zone of former town of St. Charles. The 2022 Virginia General Assembly adopted legislation which terminated and annulled the charter for the town of St. Charles due to the fact it had ceased to function as a town under Virginia law. The proposed zoning of this area will bring it into compliance with Lee County's zoning ordinance and establish zoning districts within the former town limits. If we have anybody here on that behalf.
If you look in your enclosure, I believe Mr. Wright provided a letter-sized copy of the map that Bell Edwards provided for us. When they annulled the charter, this brought St. Charles' town limits back under the county's jurisdiction for zoning. So we had to actually, the Planning Commission went in and created zoning districts within what was the town limits. If you look on that map, the red line shows what was the town limits. And then what Dell done was the outline, so you could still see the overview instead of shading it in and just outlined the different colors. The legend shows that if you look at, as you come into town on the south side of St. Charles, the green is a RM, which is a single-family manufactured home residential district. It's similar to the R1 district that you see on the outskirts of town, which is the yellow. The difference between the RM and the R1, the R1 only allows for sick built dwellings. The RM allows for manufacturing housing as well. So if someone had something happen to one of their homes and they wanted to replace it with a manufactured home, within that RM district, that would be allowed for them. The purple that you see through the, kind of the heart of what was the town is a village commercial. The VC district, a mixture of residential business, it provides the residents access to community services such as the clinic, zoning clinics within that. There is one parcel up off of Body Blue that you see is a gray, which is an M2. The reason, outside of what was in the county's jurisdiction, the rest of that parcel was already zoned M2. So we just extended it on down, so that entire parcel would be zoned consistently to keep anything split, parcels. If there's nothing outlined, that's A1 all, all the agricultural district has no color, it's just the overlay. Most of the county is zoned A1. Just it's designed to protect and conserve the natural resources of the county by encouraging amounts between low-intensity development and preservation of agriculture on forest land. So those are the Planning Commission's recommendations. We have no comment in our hearing from the public. Like I would recommend this to offer approval.
Got anybody got any questions? Thank you. Anybody else on that St. Charles rezoning request? Okay. Well, close the public hearing on that particular request and hoping for a motion to...
I might vote to approve.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
I'll say.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Can you hear us okay? Mr. Kendrick?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we got, I apologize by mistake, this pronounces Danny Troyer. Danny Troyer, special use permit request. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia, to solicit input on a special use permit request. Danny Troyer has applied for a special use permit to allow manufacturing of many storage buildings and portable wooden decks in an A1 agricultural district. The property consists of 20.766 acres of land and is located in the Flatbuis community approximately 0.40 miles west of Wilson Hills Road, tax parcel number 67-7-1.
This is something that would be allowed strictly as a special use permit. Again, in the Planning Commission meeting, there was no opposition. It was a unanimous vote directly to approve over this special use permit. It's just that Mr. Troyer intends to build essentially similar timberline apartments, small, just shared schedules and the initial building, just portable decks that could be manufactured and took just outside.
Have I got any questions on that? Okay, got anybody else here on that, on that request? Okay, hearing done, we're open for approval of that special use permit.
May I make a question to approve?
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Say.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All.
Okay, next we got Wolford Investment Properties LLC rezoning request. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia, to solicit input on a rezoning request. Wolford Investment Properties LLC has applied for rezoned property from A1 agriculture to M2 general industrial. Property consists of 638.88 acres of land and is located in the Robbins Chapel community, north and south of State Route 606 off of Stewart Road, tax parcels number 6-A-46, 6-A-47, 6-A-48, 6-A-49, and 6-A-50.
I'd like to just refer to the intent of the M2 district. This is straight out of the zoning ordinance. It's a general industrial district which provides desirable employment opportunities while enhancing economic development potential, enlarge the tax base, and provide needed services or products, not in close proximity to residential business surrounding industrial areas. This is over 600 acres of land in a extremely isolated area of the county. In the Planning Commission meeting, we did have an adjoining property owner who had questions and concerns. Mr. Wolford was able to discuss all of his issues or concerns with him. By the time the meeting was over, I think all of his issues have been resolved and he was very much in favor of allowing them to do what they're ordered to do there. It is, as of right now, just a rezon, we request a rezon of that land from A1 to M2. That would, if approved, allow anything that's allowed to use in M2, or they could apply in the future for special use permits within the M2. If there's any other questions as far as their intent, I would also refer back to Mr. Wolford. I don't know what the Planning Commission meeting, it was unanimous, except there was no public opposition, just questions.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you. Got anybody else on that behalf? Okay. We'll close the public comment on that rezoning request and I'll make a motion to adopt that, or to approve that special use permit request.
I'll say.
This, this is, this is rezon, this is rezon.
What'd I say?
It was...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
They were probably required with the special use request.
I'm sorry, I was looking at one of the...
Right.
But the motion is made to approve the rezoning request. Had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, departmental reports, building inspection, zoning. Anybody have any questions? I told the plan.
Yeah, his report, he's been a couple days.
I saw somebody has any questions, we'll move along, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Constitutional Officers Treasure report.
Treasure report is not ready. They, I saw him in the hall this morning, he said he did not get all the information that he needed from Social Services in time to prepare a report, so we'll provide it later.
Did you repeat that?
The treasurer said he was not, he was not able to provide the report for me tonight because they just got their information from Social Services. He's plugged out the...
Okay. Okay, anybody got any questions other than that one about not having the correct report? Okay, we'll move on to public expression, anybody here opposed? If you would, please just state your name and your address and just about three minutes, we'll allow three minutes to...
I am Tammy Mullins with Kid Central Incorporated.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Tammy Mullins.
Yeah, I got that.
With Kid Central.
Kid Central, good.
Incorporated. And we, and this is Terrence Henry, the Assistant Director, I'm Executive Director with Kid Central. And we are here today to share with you that we are writing a grant to provide early childhood, comprehensive early childhood services for children and families here in Lee County. And we're hoping to obtain the support of this year board. The grant consists of serving 47 families and children here in Lee County. We would need to stack the facility of like about 10 or 14...
Hold up, hold up, just a second. You all, please, don't... Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. We are writing a grant through PIVSAR to provide early childhood services for 46 families here in Lee County. We provide childcare services throughout southwest Virginia to wives in Dickinson County currently, and we're hoping to expand here in Lee County. We're looking for a location to establish the childcare center in, and we're hoping to gain your all's support and answer any questions you might have about the process.
Anybody got any questions? Can you hear good? Come on. Can you hear the speakers good? Anybody got any questions?
Are y'all the ones at Big Stone and Appalachian?
Yes, we are, y'all. And I did, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I had to have some information, you all want that little brochure that we have about Kid Central, and you're welcome to visit our website, of course. But hopefully this is the beginning of a relationship that can bring you in an excess of a million federal dollars in Lee County, besides, you know, 10 or 15 new jobs, and helping families that are already here become employed because we've reached out to several people in Lee County and we've found that one of the barriers to becoming employed is that there was no childcare. And so we are specifically targeting infants and toddlers, which is the hardest and most expensive childcare to buy. So hopefully we can move forward from here, be successful in our collaboration.
So have you all explored around the city what's, what's available as far as buildings, what size building?
We have some, and we're, we're still in the process of looking also, and that our services aren't, are at no charge to families.
Yes. So once a family, if a family got in our Early Head Start Center, we provide formula, we provide doctors, we provide lives, we provide all meals, and any kind of family engagement, we buy families in to take part of developmental activities, field trips, all that is free for families. There's no charge for our service.
Is there a limitation on family income, or is it just a broad spectrum of everybody?
There is, it is an income eligibility program, but we do have the ability to take some over-income families. We were, we reached out to Social Services to cause, one of the eligibility requirements can be tANAP if you receive SNAP. So any family that would receive TANAP or SNAP would be automatically eligible. A fostered family, a fostered child would be eligible. If you received SSI, you'd be automatically eligible. Other than that, there are federal income guidelines that we have to abide by.
So what you're just asking us for is just, is just support?
Yeah. If you want to give us money, well, that'll be fine. But what we have is that we are bringing money to pull it into Lee County.
I got a job, I'm proud of it.
I'm going to leave this with Mr. Poe, so you can...
Thank you.
We can give this card for y'all. Yeah, any questions, just give us a call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else for public expression?
Hello, gentlemen of the board, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Captain Jeffrey Oates of the St. Charles Volunteer Rescue Squad Incorporated. I just wanted to let you all know that we had complied with your request and that we Also, I respectfully would like to request permission to go forward with the ALS. I did speak with Mr. Kendrick. Investigation is complete. I do have results of that investigation, if y'all would like to have a look at.
Look to their left.
Permission to approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, the only thing really that I'm asking is for consideration here. This would be done under my close supervision and very strict regulations. May I approach?
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank you all for, you know, taking immediate action.
Well, we're going to try our best to get it all straight out.
Right. Now, like I say, I'd like to take immediate action on the, on the matter that needed to...
Yes, sir, I agree. I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just did ask if Mr. Poe would email me those...
A copy of?
A copy of what? We just looked at?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, he said yes.
Can you, can you leave that copy with me?
I can, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Is he going to drop now?
Do you want to drop now, Mike?
Uh, we're not going to be around soon.
Okay. Anybody else for public expression? Okay, hearing done, we'll move forward. Uh, if we have any more discussion on that, or if we have anything we need to...
We'll take a position later.
Okay, approval of minutes, March 19th, 2024, regular meeting. Anybody got any question on the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of refunds to glass heating and air. I'll make a motion to approve the refund request.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got County Administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued, and approval of disbursements. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Say.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, delegations, first we got the Virginia Walk of Extension Storage Needs, Navy Biden Unit Coordinator.
Yes, so we are to the point that we do need more storage, but we're also under budget. But we're under budget under salaries because we had one 4-H agent, she left, we go back to where she, where she was from originally, that position, so she left August, we didn't get one until January, so we have that money, plus the FCS agent also was able to transfer back closure to where she was from originally. So we have salary savings, so we're probably going to be under budget about $26,000. And so basically my request is if I could spend some of that towards a storage, another storage building out of the extension office. We've got a lot of programs going on, we, in the infant wisdom, started a shooting sports club, which means that we have a lot of equipment for that, and some of the other things that I have stored, I probably could get rid of, but I always just had this fear that I'll leave them, that I'm running out of them. I did inherit that from God's hand. So, things like that, but anyways, that, that's my request.
Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve your request.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the meeting.
Okay, next we got White Rocks Community Center funding request, Mr. Wayne Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, Lord Rivers, Mr. Wright, Mr. Poe, glad to get to come before you. I know you requested this, you know, last month to be... I hope in the case, Mr. Poe, a weak moment, when I requested $5,000 for the center, he evidently watches our funds pretty closely. Tried that last year, you did the same thing. But we were glad to give the $2,500 last year that the board included in the budget for us. It helps us greatly with our expenditures. I'd like to present you with what we've, what we're being placed with at the center. Before COVID, the pandemic, we had quite a few supporters coming in at the center. We had musicians coming in, we had various groups coming in using the center. And some of them paying us, we tried to collect $75 for a three-hour stay that they have to cover water and electricity bills, but that doesn't take care of their overall bills for the year. To give you a little summary of things for expenditure for, we have water bills, $700, I think this is over a yearly time now, electrical, usually $1,680, but that fluctuates with people using the building, that's cooling, or the building during the summer. Internet expenditures, $540. Propane that we use to heat the building in the wintertime, and we also have a gas stove that people coming in using the center, able to heat their food or cook on whatever they might need. We have an insurance bill every year, which is quite expensive, $1,300, $1,367. That's not, that was last year's bill, I'm not sure what is going up this year, any or not. We also have minor things like the fire and safety inspection for fire extinguisher, the State Corporation Commission for Incorporation, $25. Mowing expenditures during the summer, approximately $360 in the mowing months, about $60 a month. We tried to get, work with court service unit, try to work with Lee County Behavior, if, whether it's not volunteer, they're out there to do the community service time. We're able to employ them at the center, make them a place to work, they have to clean the building, they have mowers sometimes during the summer when we don't have, when we have that person, we're not at the expenditure for that month. Also, we're out for, I was talking to Mrs. James over here, through the, the service sheet provides, I told her anytime they need a place for people to work, to put their time in, we would be glad to work. We like to get people that we can give the things to do, whether it's cleaning the building or mowing or outside, whatever, they go ahead and do with this, so we're not in, having to be in direct supervision of them all the time. We just tell them and they take care of the things we need, and the ones we've had before have done a real good job for us. So I'd like to request, you know, the total amount that they come up with is over $5,000, $5,600 for the yearly expenses. So you can see the $2,500, you've given us, helped us quite a bit, but, you know, with these expenses, we don't have the fundraising funds we normally had back before the pandemic, and we would like to request more for us this year, whether it be that much or as much as great as we can give. Also, I'd like for you to consider the other centers too. I'm sure they're in the same situation we are as far as expenditures that are spent, that they're putting forward, and whether they're, you know, we're out there to serve the community. We want to make a place for the community to come, they need to have reunions, birthday parties, whatever, and make it available for everyone that's able to come. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak with you tonight.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? The meetings and stuff that you have there, do you all charge a fee, or is this just free to, to John Dokes?
We've had a recovery group that meets there on Wednesday nights, when they can meet, we don't charge them anything, and they don't pay us anything there. We've had, through the Health Department, they've come in and hosted health and wellness meetings like they do at Pinkton Center, and we don't collect anything from them either. Mainly what we're getting is from individuals and groups that come in, the $75 that we have in income for us there.
Any more questions? Thank you.
We're kind of, Mr. Poe, would any other center request a motion?
No one else, I mean, we budgeted the $2,500...
No one else, I mean, we budgeted the twenty five hundred for each, and that's been paid out for this current year budget. We've not had any additional requests other than from White Rocks.
That has come.
Yeah, I think they're related.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, it'll be coming from the other two also. And that's another issue we can, we can take in close session also. Any more questions, bye. Okay. Yeah, that's an item we'd like to, yeah, I got it. There's, that's an item I'd like to take, let's see. Next we have Dana Cronkite.
Cronkite, I like Walter.
I forgot that much time, so Walter would have to.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you so much for having me today, my name is Dana Cronkite. I'm the Director of Economic Development over in Dickinson County, and I'm happy to be here today to talk to you a little bit about a project that we have going on. Over in Dickinson County. Some of you may be aware that we have a large economic development project currently underway for a substance use disorder treatment facility. Now, most people when they hear substance use disorder treatment facility, they don't necessarily think of it as an economic development project. I think probably most everyone in this room, like myself, has probably had someone or knows someone that has struggled with addiction at some point in their life. That opioid epidemic, as we all know, has struck hard here in southwest Virginia. When my county administrator, Mr. Larry Barton, joined Dickinson County in twenty twenty, whenever he looked at the workforce participation rate in the county. The large gap in our workforce participation rate was also the most heavily addicted, and that is that male, age eighteen to fifty. And I'm sure Lee County probably experiences something very similar. So we've taken an approach where we've been able to collect, I should say, and obtain almost eight million dollars. To develop a twelve month substance use disorder treatment program that will be located in the Red Onion section of Dickinson County. So we've partnered with a group out of Kentucky called Addiction Recovery Care, I don't know if any of you are familiar with them. But Addiction Recovery Care started out about fifteen years ago as a grassroots ministry in eastern Kentucky with a prosecuting attorney. Who had been an eighteen year alcoholic. He got sober and felt called to be able to do some work to try to help some people get to treatment. Today, they have treated over seventy thousand Kentuckians in the past twelve years, and their success rate is unlike anything that I've ever seen before. My background is actually in social work, I have a clinical social work degree. I'm from Dickinson County, left for twenty years, I married a marine and we traveled around. And for me to be able to come back home to work on an economic development project that also treats substance use disorder is, you know. It's kind of one of those, like, you know, full circle moments for me. But what we're doing is the program at Red Onion is a one hundred and twelve bed facility. Where we will be providing, this facility is for men, space to live for up to twelve months while they go through substance use disorder treatment. While they go through life skills training, while they have their infectious diseases treated, while they get their health back in order. And then while they have the opportunity to go through workforce development training. That is the key to long term recovery, length of time in treatment, and vocational training. And this program will offer both of those things to the participants. Now, one of the things that a lot of people ask me is are we going to be treating people other than Dickinson County residents, absolutely. My projection is that in the first one hundred and twelve beds, we may have five or ten that are actually from Dickinson County. So what does that mean? That means that all across southwest Virginia, individuals who are the most vulnerable, who are eligible for Medicaid. Will be able to come to our facility for long term treatment. So what I'm here for tonight, and I believe if I understood correctly, last month, Mr. Kierko Man came and spoke to you. About the Opioid Abatement Authority and his application for funding from that agency. I'm not here to ask for any money. What I'm here tonight to ask for is your support and your commitment to partner with Dickinson County as being a sub applicant on the application. That we have made to the Opioid Abatement Authority for a three point three million dollar grant. That would be used to add to what we already have at Wildwood Recovery Center, and that would be the Wildwood Health Complex. Which would allow an opportunity for various different things that would be open to the community. But part of that would be treating infectious diseases, partnering with the health department to offer vaccinations for infectious disease prevention and control. Different training classes on food preparation, I know that that sounds like it could not be very important, but to some of these folks who have been in long term addiction. Something as, as basic as food preparation is something that is really important. So again, not here to ask for any money, we've made a rather large ask to the Opioid Abatement Authority, we realize that it's a large ask. However, we believe that with the expansive nature of our project, the fact that anyone from the state of Virginia will be able to come to treatment at this facility. That we have a decent opportunity to be able to get funding to continue to further the resources that we're offering at Wildwood. In addition to the Wildwood Recovery Center, we also announced last year a partnership with Southwest Properties, who is our developer at the Wildwood Recovery Center. And they're actually going to be converting one of our former elementary schools into the women's facility. So we hope by the end of this year, we'll have one hundred and twelve beds for men for long term treatment. And by the end of twenty twenty five, we'll have a facility for women, which we believe will be around eighty beds. So this, the facility for the wellness center will also be accessible for those folks who are at the women's facility. Does anybody have any questions? I do have a prepared memorandum of understanding that I shared with Mr. Poe. There's actually two different documents that have to be signed by the locality in order to be part of this cooperative partnership. And for those that may not be aware, the way that the Opioid Abatement Authority set up their pot of money, they got a huge pot of money. And they allocated by an algorithm, basically, to each of the localities to get a direct allocation to be used for opioid abatement. Dickinson County, so far, I think we've gotten three hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. We have used two hundred and fifty thousand of that already towards this project. The other, another seventy five thousand went to our local women's recovery house. But those are the funds that came directly to the locality. Then there's another smaller pot of money that is held with the Opioid Abatement Authority that each locality can apply for. As long as it meets the criteria for abatement, that can then come back to the locality. Then what they did was they created this giant pot of money and said, okay, we need to have cooperative partnerships between at least two localities. For folks to be able to apply for this big pot of money. And when I say I'm talking millions and millions of dollars in this big pot of money. So this is our opportunity to be able to try to tap into that, that funding that has been awarded to the Commonwealth for opioid abatement. And I don't think that there's a better use for those funds than to come back here to southwest Virginia to be able to treat some of our folks, so. Anybody have any questions?
Did I understand you say it's on the Red Onion side?
It is. So Red Onion State Prison is in Wise County. As you turn out to go to Red Onion, before you get there, there's property that's owned by the Dickinson County IDA. And we are developing an industrial park on one side of the road.
Is that the Chipmunks?
Yes, it is, it sure is. So, well, it's on Chipmunks Road. So this property is actually at the top of the road, right as you come up the Red Onion State Prison Road, you turn left on Chipmunks Road. And it's at the very top, adjacent to the industrial park that we're developing. And the goal will be, ARC is really good about being nimble, and they create vocational and training opportunities. If company A comes and says, I need welders to do X, Y, and Z, they will say, okay, what do we need to do? And they create a training program to be able to train those individuals so that they can do the work there. So one of our hopes is to be able to leverage that workforce that we're creating when we're marketing those sites. And some of those sites may end up being RITFAH projects that we're all a part of. And so, you know, we're trying to look at this, like I said, as an economic development project, workforce development, community development, all of those things. But yes, it is on the way to Red Onion State Prison.
Thank you. Anybody have any question? What's the success rate of the existing company that you're partnering with?
If someone stays in treatment over six months, they have around about eighty percent success rate.
Do you mean they don't even stay six months somehow?
Some of them don't stay six months, no. So their average length of stay, I think, is right now is around two and a half months. Mr. Poe, in the attachment, there was actually a presentation, a slide deck from ARC. If you look in that slide deck, they have a lot of their statistics, their average length of stay. They have a lot of folks who stay the entire twelve months, but you have some people who may go and stay two days and then they leave. Because it is a voluntary program, you obviously can't force them to stay. However, what they have found is that they have, they have a very good working relationship with the judicial system. So although someone can't be court ordered to go to treatment, a lot of their participants are in some sort of court proceedings. Where the judge gives them an option, they can either go to treatment or go to jail. So what they have found actually, and what I was taught while I was in school, is you can't force someone into treatment, right? I mean, they have to be able to want to go. But what they have found actually is these folks who find their way there by a judge, that they actually have longer, better success. Because they're staying in treatment longer, and it's eventually starting to, you know, to take shape. I have a lot of people that I know that have been to the short term treatment facilities in southwest Virginia. By no means am I knocking them at all, but what we are often known with as far as substance use disorder treatment is completely different than what they do. Because they're looking at the person as a whole, they're not just giving them dry and sending them back to the same environment in which they came from. Their goal is to work with them, to be able to try to help build back those family. And a lot of the folks, if they stay twelve months, there's also an opportunity then for long term housing opportunity, so. The goal being to give them some hope and to see that they can actually have a better future.
Any more question?
If I could, I just call you, because if you let it, she'll call by the way. She's passionate about this, but how long have we been talking about this, a year?
So, I started, I'm at Dickinson County, I'm August of twenty two.
Okay, well, over a year, but I thought this was a very unique approach to economic development in rebuilding your workforce. So that when you bring a prospect in, you actually have the hopes of having a clean, sober workforce that's available to take those jobs. Rather than vice versa, bringing them in and then not being, not being certain that you'll be able to fill enough applicants to fill the positions. So, I mean, I applaud their efforts, I think, I think it is a unique approach, but I think in our region, it's one that can work.
Can I ask one more question? How is your treatment, are you using these, what is it, Subinox or these drugs? Are you, you are using those things?
Well, I can't speak a hundred percent for ARC because I don't represent ARC, but what I know from them is that they do use Medicaid, medical assisted treatment. When necessary, they work with the individual and find what that individual needs. So if, if medical assisted treatment is used, it's not used on a long term basis. It's used during that initial twenty eight days, which is considered the residential treatment part, where someone is going through this significant detox period. But it's up to the individual whether or not that's something that they want to even entertain.
You're just asking for, basically, like a letter of support to partner?
Well, I'm asking for the approval of the memorandum of understanding, which partners Dickinson County and Lee County as, as being partners on this project. Dickinson County would be the fiscal agent, again, not asking for any type of financial support. But it essentially is symbolic letter of support, but it's a requirement from the Opioid Abatement Authority for the application.
Have you got anything from Wise County?
Not yet.
Are you going to talk to Scott County?
Yes, yeah, so I've been in contact with Scott County, Wise County, Russell County, and I guess that would be it. And the hope is that everyone can come on board, it's just a matter right now of timing if we're able to get all the documents and stuff in place in time. Unfortunately, we were a little late to the game of getting the application put together, not because we were necessarily slacking. But because we were trying to figure out what exactly it was that we really needed to do, and we kind of changed the approach several times. Where we landed on what we think is probably the best bid for the fund, so. I just, I need one to get the application going. And you're my first stop.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it to.
Thank you.
I think most of you vote to support that.
Got a motion, got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to new business. Board appointments, building code to appeal, and I'd like to make a motion to table that appointment.
Sure.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, next we got the hospital board, we got hospital authority board, we got five members. Mr. Harridale, Ms. Diana Poe, Mr. Ronnie Montgomery, Ms. Jill Gao, and Travis Lawson. I make a motion to reappoint.
I'll say.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, next we got the ninth district development financing.
All on the cover, right?
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, next we got the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable. That's the last board, I mean.
Well, that one, she was reappointed and then it was discovered that, we were notified that she has to live in Bristol now, she's moved out of Lee County.
Did we find out if that was something that, were we required to have that, or is it something that meets anymore?
That still meets.
Still meets.
Yes, thanks for that meeting.
Is that district?
It's not district specific, it's just one member from the council office.
Okay, does anybody have anybody in mind?
They want to talk with some of the folks at Soil and Water Office, that maybe, if they have someone, or they may know of someone who might be interested in serving.
You talking about Roger Heaven's?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll say.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Youth Services Board.
That's, that's nothing that you necessarily have to do tonight, I did want to get that on your radar. These appointments used to end in August or September, the youth appointments. And they changed that internally now with the Youth Services Board. As you know, they're either juniors or seniors in high school, both of our current appointees are seniors. So when they graduate, they no longer eligible to serve, so they end their terms now in May. So that as they graduate, they're replaceable, either a rising junior or senior. So if you, you know, you've still got a month to look for somewhere, if you want to look within the two schools, the possible students to consider for that. And I included the letter from Mr. Keith at the Youth Services Board, or also found out some news, so. If you've already, if you've taken this and already found someone, that's fine, if you want to make an appointment, but. But it is more just to get you alert and, and looking for someone. Because in past years, we've gone half a year without having representation of, of students. And I think it's a good opportunity for some of our juniors and seniors to serve in that capacity and to understand that they can have a say and a voice and an impact in, in the services provided to the youth.
Does anybody have anybody in mind? Well, I know one real fine young gentleman, but I'd like to ask him first. I mean, he's at Lee High School. Uh, can I say his name? Morgan Graham. I think Morgan's a fine young man.
I'll make a motion to table until next month. Get, get broad enough to be in touch with somebody.
And Mike would you?
Maybe Mike finds someone.
Somebody down there, Thomas Faulkner. Okay, thank you. Okay, we got a motion to table until next month?
I'll say it.
Had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm gonna be stepping down from the regional chairboard, and I would like to appoint Mr. Poe to take my place.
Okay, you make a motion?
Make the motion before Mr. Poe takes my place.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the St. Charles Waterline Project Grant Pre-Contract Documents.
The county's been awarded grant funding for this waterline replacement project from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and also Appalachian Regional Commission, that's the two separate grants there. In order to comply with the grant requirements, there are several documents that have to be adopted by the board. Uh, they now allow us to compile these all into one actual resolution. We used to adopt them one at a time, but we can group them together now. There's a resolution that states that you agree to appropriate the funds once you receive. And legally, you cannot spend any funds until they are appropriated, so you have to do it anyway. Uh, the next one is you have to comply with Section Three Business and Employment Plan, which, uh, is, is a document that we draw up. There's a draft of it, uh, in your packet. Uh, it's a two-page document and it's standard verbiage required by the DXCD. Uh, there's residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. Our water, uh, I don't know that, I'm not aware of any water project you've ever had that required relocation anyway. Uh, if it was a housing project or something like that, that's a potential, uh, and potentially some things. But, uh, most of the case, this is just the water line underground, but you still have to have, uh, that, that provision adopted. You have a Section Five oh four grievance procedure. Uh, hold on just a second, let me get over to it. Uh, that's, uh, to resolve any complaints alleging any action prohibited by the Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD. Uh, that deals with handicapped individuals and so, uh, that's, that's a simple grievance procedure that's put in place that states that you'll, uh, resolve that. A self-evaluation checklist, uh, and it's pretty much self-explanatory. You walk down the list. Deals with parking, the building entrance, whether it's handicap accessible, things of that nature, uh, for the, for the county. What facilities are provided for handicapped individuals? Can all rooms be used? Uh, things of that nature, just, just general dealing again with handicap accessibility. There's also a certification to comply with power of housing requirement. There's no housing that takes place in this, but in, under any community development block grant, you have to have these provisions included in your contract. And a non-discrimination policy, basically says you will not discriminate. Uh, so, uh, one resolution can take care of all of that. It means that you've adopted all of those and will put us in compliance, uh, with pre-contract documentation that's required for these grants. That is Resolution Twenty-four dash oh oh three. And it effectively encompasses and, uh, adopts all of the provisions that I just stated.
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, Resolution Twenty-four dash zero zero three.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the Workforce Investment Youth Services Waiver Request.
I'll give you that just a second. I just want to state, I think that's a long explanation of the DXCD stuff, but every grant, you'll see that. And we won't take as much time with it the next time because it's the same thing for every project, basically. So, and that's the worst thing, you make it grants every year, they don't accept what you've already adopted in prior years. You have to do it project by project, so anyway. Uh, on workforce investment, Youth Services Waiver Request. Uh, Southwest, Southwest Virginia Workforce Development Board, which covers the Cumberland Plateau and the Whistler Planning District areas, the seven counties, uh, are, uh, they're requesting a waiver to allow them to continue providing Title One Youth Services within the San Antonio one-city region that they serve. They have provided these services, uh, ever since Lee County became the local grant recipient for their program funding. That's been probably at least eight years now that they've served in that capacity. Uh, there are some details in the request and some background information, the program design, their past performance. All that was included in your packet. Uh, they, they provide these services on a year-round basis, but a lot of this is provided during summer months with, uh, students who are out of school for the summer, looking for employment. And a lot of these services are provided by the workforce development in trying to find jobs for them. And also provide job skills and things of that nature. They have different locations that they offer these at. They included those in your packet. Uh, they have a, a certified one-stop center in Richlands, which is in Tazewell Counties. They have one in Hayside, uh, which covers Dickinson County. They have one in Burundi, the Cannon County, one in Lebanon, Russell County, uh, one in Wise, one in St. Charles. And, uh, they also, that, that facility in St. Charles is actually owned, the building's owned by Stone Mountain Health Services, that they make it available to them for that. And they also have an office in Scott County. So they have an office available in every county. Uh, because of, uh, the state guidelines covering workforce development, uh, even though they've been providing these services for several years on an ongoing basis, they have to have a waiver which allows them to continue to do that from the locality of Youth Services they're grant recipient. So that's, this is an angle of the question.
If you have any questions, I'll try to explain it further.
Mr. Mowgli was our resident, uh, workforce development specialist because he's served on that board for many years.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion, got a second? It's, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, my turn. Any here? Okay, next we got the Commonwealth Attorney Body Camera Funding Requirement.
I hope you read the information of the letter that you submitted. Uh, this, this too is an annual thing that we deal with. It's somewhat of a, a budgeting request, but I'd like to get it approved so that we know how to move forward with our budget preparation. Uh, any locality that, uh, in which their law enforcement officers use body cams, uh, I'm trying to think what year, uh, the state did this, but there's legislation approved and it comes through the State Compensation Board that any county that uses body cameras with their law enforcement personnel, there's a requirement that you have to provide, uh, either an extra, uh, Assistant Commonwealth Attorney for each seventy-five cameras that you run, which we have fewer than seventy-five officers. So, uh, the stipulation and requirement for Lee County would be to provide one additional Assistant Commonwealth Attorney. Now, the other, uh, all the other attorneys in that office are, their salaries are state-funded. Their salaries are set and funded by the Commonwealth. But with this provision, you have to provide that cost. You have to pay the salary of that, uh, additional Assistant Commonwealth Attorney and all the benefits that go with that. So, uh, in lieu of that, you have the option, uh, with consent of the, the Commonwealth Attorney, to negotiate an agreement that may result in less money than that. I guess it could result in more if they're a good negotiator, but typically it's for less. And in, in our case, that's been the case for several years. As he's outlined in here, the entry, entry level salary for an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney is seventy-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. With the benefits and everything that go with that, total cost would run closer to ninety-five to a hundred thousand dollars. And even though it is, uh, the, the cost of that, it's fully at the locality's expense, you're not allowed to set the salary. You have to go with the minimum set by the State Compensation Board. So that's, that's the potential cost that you would be looking at. Uh, he also outlined to us that they really don't have space in their office for another attorney. So, uh, each of the past four years, uh, he has negotiated with county and put forth a proposal that comes in at much less than that cost. Uh, this year, uh, very similar to what he's done in previous years, he's made the following proposal. He's requesting salary supplements for the existing employees, which provides additional funding for them. There's an, uh, an extensive amount of time that is required in order for them in that office to review all of the tapes and prepare everything for cases to go to court. Uh, all of the tapes have to be viewed, evaluated, uh, there is quite a bit of time involved in that. So the salary supplements are for the extra workplace of employees in that office. Uh, he has a breakdown of the five employees that he is requesting that those salary supplements be provided to. Uh, then following that, he also, as he has done in past years, he had requested fifteen thousand dollars in addition to the, uh, fifty-five thousand, or yeah, fifty-five thousand salary supplements. He asked that fifteen thousand be set aside, uh, for the camera system maintenance. That would include costs for cloud storage, licensing, and ensuring that footage is accessible and manageable. And this basically would be funding available to the sheriff's office to keep the equipment up to date and current, in good repair, everything of that nature. Uh, he's gone ahead and included, uh, in addition to this, which is separate from what he goes into next, he also provides collection services, uh, for fines and costs, uh, from the court systems that go unpaid. Uh, they, they started, this used to be done at the state level and the county got nothing out of it. All the money, anything that was collected, everything went to the state. By being collected locally through the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, uh, a portion of those funds, fifty percent goes to the state, the, or I think it's, it's a fifty-fifty split. Uh, but, well, I'll take that back. I'm not certain of the percentage that goes to the state. If there's a percentage that goes to the state and then there's an amount that stays with the locality. The fifty-fifty split that's been agreed to in previous years is that his office is allocated fifty percent of whatever the county share is and the county retains the other half. And, uh, his argument on the fifty percent split is that his office is doing the work, uh, pursuing the fines and the collections on all of this. And so rather than request all of it, he does at least request a half of whatever's recovered by the county, stays with, with your budget. You, you keep that for the county's general fund and, uh, that half of that would be allocated to him. That is a, it's a budget issue, but it's included in the letter and they sort of run hand-in-hand, just to be honest. So, uh, he's gone ahead and said that the, uh, with, with the revenue sharing funding that's coming back to the county, he's got a total cost there of seventy thousand dollars, but with what he expects to recover and the portion that would come back to the county, it would be a total cost to the county of about sixty thousand dollars for the, to comply with the body camera requirement, rather than ninety-five or a hundred that you'd be out if you had to provide an additional attorney. So I, I just, I wanted to get it in front of you rather than waiting for the budget because if we have an answer on this, then we can go ahead and prepare it as part of the budget and have that much done.
I'll make a motion to, go ahead. First, does anybody got any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, next is, uh, reports and recommendations of the county attorney. You got any?
Uh, she said if they need, she would be available by phone. I think she has two children, six, and her husband's working this shift, but she can't wait to keep kids. Yeah, that, there was one item there and that, uh, the lifestyle of under new business was Economic Development Director interview schedule.
Hold on.
This morning, we gave you copies of the applications last month. And before the meeting's over, I'd like to get your input on whether you're ready to interview and when you'd like to make a possible schedule.
If, if, if I want to turn up, I'll be back in town, uh, Friday morning. Anytime after that, I'll do what I want. I can make you work after five.
We can talk about it a little bit more here whenever we close it out. Okay, uh, reports and recommendations from the county administrator.
Got just a, a few items here. Uh, most of this is just making you aware of some things. Uh, if you're not aware already, we did, uh, we had an accident with one of our trucks, a dump truck over the transfer station. Uh, we had to go, uh, uh, over in the Blackwater area. Uh, truck went off the road and flipped it over on the side, uh, lost a load of gravel. Uh, we got, we finally got an estimate back on the truck. Uh, we've had, uh, John Carter look at it. He says he, the, the cab is warped, but he says he can straighten it. Uh, some other damage, especially on the right side. Uh, I think the estimate we got is just above, just a little above twelve thousand dollars. We have just submitted that to the insurance company, so haven't heard anything back from them yet. But as soon as we get something back, we, uh, if we can get approval on that, I don't know if they'll send an adjuster out to look at it before they let us start working on it or not, but we'd like to move forward with getting it repaired. Uh, it's slowing down several projects for us at this point.
Uh, can we send him to motion today that when the money comes and he can just go to be worked on without him coming to us? And all that kind of good stuff?
We don't, we don't even have to wait for that. We just need for the insurance company to say yes, you know, accept that and approve it. Of course, there could be more damage beyond that. Everything's surface until you get into something in depth, so. Uh, but we're hoping it won't, you know, let you beyond damage to us. But yes, you can.
I brought up today, I don't know what everybody else's thoughts is, uh, that in the meantime, you know, if there comes a need, I talked with Gary and Gary doesn't seem to think that there will be a desperate need for a dump truck till that gets repaired. But I told Dana, I'd like to get the, the board placing on if he needs a dump truck, that we, we, you know, we approve him to, to lease one. You know, let Dana take care of whatever, you know, needs to do to, to approve one. Lease a wise until we get the truck back.
Short term lease.
Short term, yeah. Yeah, just something in case of need. I, I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
I could, I could, all that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, uh, if, if, if it comes to the emergency that we need to lease a truck short term, we go ahead and Dana approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dana on that same, on that, I have, uh, had talked to Gary. He says there was another accident with another truck with the same issue.
Yes, about, uh, we had, and, and we'll, we'll be dealing with, with the, uh, with, with air accident, but there was- but there was in the same location, just a few, what, two, three weeks maybe before, there's a propane truck that dropped off in there. And Gary took some pictures. There's a little bit of break in the pavement shoulder right in that area. And if, you know, with a loaded truck going through there, it could have a tendency to pull it if you got the least bit over on the edge. And you're on a, apparently there are secondary strokes anyway. So if you get that rear axle over, they'll pull you, so.
I guess my thought behind that is, behind that statement was, have we contacted the state to see if there's something they can do to?
I will, I have, yes, yeah, but I can, I'll send Mr. Sumter a note on that. Anyway, as a result of that accident, we were down one employee. He actually broke vertebrae in the back. He's probably going to be out three, four months recovering from that. And learned yesterday, we have another employee who is going to have some surgery next week and it's going to be out for a few weeks at least, minimum.
Bypass.
Yes, well, I could go into details because that's a protected class of discussion when you get to medical resources, but we'll be having some surgery. And so we're going to be down two employees over there. After finally getting back to full capacity employee wise, last year we were back down two again, at least for the short term. We've also had some either resignations or notification on, impending resignations from convenience center sites. Of course, the one in Jasper, we've been taking applications for. I brought those with me tonight. We also, convenience center employee at the Woodway site has resigned and we had noticed yesterday, Friday or yesterday, that the one at Stickleville has resigned. So they're covering that with tents. We have some floaters, but we've run out of floaters. So they're covering it however they can. If you happen to pass by one of these sites, maybe early in the morning, or at seven o'clock or seven-ten or seven-fifteen and the gates are not open, it's because the driver, the truck driver that's collecting the waste at that site for that day is probably the one that's going to be opening up. Some cases, an employee will go by and open these up at seven, but in some cases, if trucks are going in that direction that day anyway, they wait till they get there and they have gone to their summer schedule now. Y'all are starting at six, correct?
Thirty.
Six-thirty, okay, start at six-thirty. So depending on where those, how those sites fall into the pickup schedule, they may not be there right at seven o'clock. If you see a site closed, that's probably what the issue is. It's just, it'll be a few minutes late getting there.
Oh, yeah, he just sent me a text message trying to, he might apologize.
If you'd like to make a call, please come down and try again. If you need help, hang up.
Hit the RLS.
Hit the what?
RLS. RLS, that kills, it kills the call. Or lifts the receiver and set it back.
I'd give that a time or two, but it would, we, but it would. What I was going to ask is, on a couple of those sites, we had put out bids for contractor, you know, contract bid for some of those sites.
Yes.
And supposedly, I mean, from what I understand, that was working out well or?
It has advantages and disadvantages. It's cheaper cost wise. Not always, we don't, we give them a general outline of what they're supposed to do, but they're contractors and not employees.
But I mean, we're still in charge of it.
Yes.
I mean, they're to do what they're supposed to do. That would be our fault if they're not doing it, it wouldn't be theirs.
The two that we've got contractors at are sites that are not handling these. We've got the one in Blackwater and the one in Sugar Red. One in Sugar Red's only got five kids, five, see, only seven.
Might be seven.
Yeah, but it's, how often do we get it?
Either two or three days a week.
Okay.
I don't think.
I don't know that I would recommend it for the Woodway site. A lot of volume there. The Jasper site we'd already advertised for, because that's one that really needs an employee there. Even though it's limited hours, I think it needs an employee outside, especially as we moved to the new site. It may be something over time we could work to a contractor site. The one in Stickleville, I don't know, I could pull. When he contacted me yesterday morning, I just went ahead immediately and ran it out just to get the jump on it, but we can pull it if you want.
Well, I would just give.
Put it out to the contractors.
The rest of the members are just, I mean, to give them an idea that, you know, we were, we're doing some of that, you know, for a cost-saving measure. See what their thoughts was on it. Like I say, if these contractors are not doing their job, that's our fault. And we're not making them do that. I think Gary had already took a problem with, with the, you might want to talk to him about. Well, I mean, that'd still fall under us. We're in charge of them, I mean, regardless of, I mean, if you talk to them or not, it's our fault. If, I mean, if they're not doing it, we need to be told and they need to either do it or get another contract.
Mr. Kudlow apologizes for having the jump on, he got a obligation.
Correct.
Let me see what else I've got. The cleaning of the exterior courthouse, the washing, that's been completed. It's not perfect, but it is a lot better than it was previously. Because it's not a deep clean, you're talking about ground and grit that's been embedded in that masonry for years and years and years, a lot of years. But it does look a lot better, looks a hundred percent better. It, the other issue that I wanted to get on right away, once it was cleaned off, is the mortar repointing, the need for that. There's actually a couple of other issues that we can wear off on some of the stonework that needs to be looked at and corrected. I took the liberty, it doesn't cost anything, but I took the liberty of contacting engineers that we have worked with and vice on the exterior and some of the interior upgrades, tossing and letting, asked if they would be willing to come and take a look at it. They were here yesterday, two representatives of that firm. We did a complete walk around on the building. We went on the roof, get a close-up look. There's only a couple of areas that the masonry or that the mortar is, has really deteriorated. There's only a couple of places, once you get down on the whole portion of the building, under the roof line. It's that capstone around the top from there above that, which on the old building, the new building's pretty good shape. Not even really issues there from that part. But on the old building, there's a parapet wall that runs about that high, actually above the roof. And it's got a lot of mortar joint deterioration. And there's a few areas where if you really, if you took a screwdriver and did just a minimal amount of work, you could pop brick out of it. So this needs to be looked at and it needs to be addressed. There's a couple of other issues, well, some other issues with the, it's either concrete panels or stonework that's been inlaid around the tops of the building. And some of the panels, even on the new part, where there are seams that have been, most of them just, they're not mortar, there's caulk. Some of the caulk and around the stonework on the old building, it looks bad. If you look at it, it's white, they use white caulk and it stands out. It's almost glaring the way it stands out away from that stone. It should have been a mortar type or some other type of caulk, it was a different color. But it's deteriorating and coming out anyway. There's a lot of areas like that where all of the caulk has completely come out and some of that stone that's inlaid. Now, it doesn't mean that the stone is loose. What does mean is that water can penetrate back in there. And once water penetrates behind it, winter months, that water's going to freeze and that's going to start working, that stone loose. And it works, just like the mortar joints allow, the brick to work loose. That freezing caulk, it pushes that, it pushes loose and eventually you start to have some problems. There's an issue, especially out here on the employee entrance on the east side of the building, in that overhead, that porch area, some of that stone has got some significant cracks in it already. And it's, we watched it over the years. They had one crack in it at one time, had an engineer look at it. He said, "Tough, everything was fine." But we're starting to see some separation in some joints. We're starting to see a lot of other cracks emanating in different directions from that. So that is needed, that. That cornerstone at the top that goes all the way around the building, a lot of that, the joints of it are, the filling, mortar, caulk, whatever was put in it has come out in it. So this needs a good general overview. What I've asked them to do is put together a proposal on, one on estimated cost of what they think it would take to get the work done and their fee for that. Now, this so happens, they got, we're dealing with a ninety-year-old building on the old part of the courthouse. Their offices are in a, you say a hundred and thirteen?
Yep.
A hundred and thirteen-year-old building wise. And they've got some of the same issues. They're having mortar repointing being done right now. It's not just hire somebody, lay some brick, come in and do that. This is a specialized work. Those joints have to be basically cut out and ground out to the point that they can restore them and get everything sealed back and get it watertight. It's a specialty type thing, not everybody does that. So it's, and it's very slow, very slow. So I don't have a projected cost tonight, but they are working on that. So we will bring that to you back next month when we get a proposal back from them. We did have a couple of issues on the new building. Some of the concrete panels on the backside of the building, we noticed there is some gaps in them. Nothing that, any kind of safety issue, they just need to be sealed so that they don't get watertight. We did notice an issue on the west end of the building. It's a little spooky looking because we hadn't noticed it before. And it's right at the top. But it's in place, we don't think there's any danger. It seems to be set in place, which is right, he's the one actually spotted it first as we were just, both of us, every time looking at the building for after it was cleaned. But it does need to be addressed. It needs to be explored to determine exactly what's taking place there. I also had a look at an issue in the stairwell on the west end of the building. We had it looked at about fifteen years ago when we did the renovations to the lower level. You've got some surface cracks in there, but we think what's been done, and it seemed to be pretty apparent, were steel girders crossed in that wall. They basically took some type of mortar mixture or concrete or something and tried to create the image of a layer that's about that big that looks like it's cinder block, just like the rest of the wall is. And what's happened where that's metal behind it, it's, and it actually, with the metal covering over the girder to get a solid surface to put that compound on, it's set out a little bit. And so there's cracks along there, little pieces of it popped out along a certain, along the seam where the beam is at. And, but they looked at that, we had it looked at by a structural engineer about fifteen years ago and they determined that there was no issue there. There was nothing that made it appear that there was any settling or anything. It was actually called a structural problem on the outside. But I did at least want them to look at that again. I think they pretty much came to the same conclusion, that they will look at it and be closer. So we'll report back on that when we have the working question. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
We'll include you up there too. Okay, next is reports and recommendations of the board.
First name, the Ag Building over here, it has probably got forty to fifty recycled round bales in it. Round bags, I'm playing about bale hay. But it's got forty or probably forty to fifty recycling bales, cardboard to plastic. My idea is to get the guys over where I'm from to get on it real quick, haul that junk out of there by the end of the month before this extra cost is going to be ensued. Get it over, we've got two works guys that's over there for right now, I don't know for, you know, for how long. But get them over there also to sweep and clean up that place and get it presentable if anything was to ever come up the Ag Building. They also said, the guys that had hauled some of this before said those bales weighed anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred pounds. So we're talking a pretty good little amount of weight right there. Because, you know, that changes at the end of this month. And some of the guys have looked over there and seen the hidden floor. I think that we need to, I mean, I asked Mr. Poe there, his thoughts on that is maybe getting somewhere other and beating that out since we're shorthanded. And maybe look at a part-time guy, Horrant maybe, because our part-time guy is, that mows and does stuff like that. He's probably going to be in the scale house. So might look at a part-time guy, you know, part-time consistent, twenty-five hours, whatever, toward mowing and stuff like that.
Do you have something on that to discuss in the closing?
Okay, and got any tractor bids in?
No, they're due at the end of the month. We actually have one in, but we can't open it, they're sealed, but they're not.
Did you say for a front? Did we get a?
I'd rather not.
Okay. Dane, do we get a repair estimate for the?
We're in the process of getting that. We'll have that by the time the bids are in.
Okay.
I just had one thing, and I just asked the, you know, the board, some thoughts on this too. Dane and I discussed that old St. Charles, third apartment building over there. It's actually our building.
The one closest to the railroad or the one crossing the railroad?
The one right across from.
Right across from the school. That's the railroad.
Did that, I thought that belonged to?
Not with Terry.
Okay.
It belonged to Terry.
That's why I said, I know they donated it to the camp.
Okay. So, and that came about because of that little MBO that's over there at eighteen, ten. But Dane and I talked about, it is our building and it looks terrible. And we were just wanting some thoughts on, or you all give some thoughts on what you all would like to see done, you know. We talked about maybe going over there and looking at it and seeing structurally if it was worth saving or tearing it down and maybe putting up a block structure or something, you know, costing something that's not too expensive. But we also talked about if it is worth saving, to get our work people to go over there and get all that, scrape all that paint stuff off of it and put a fresh look on it. Make it look halfway decent. Make it look halfway decent. It looks terrible out there in front of that school.
I think, well, the first thing needs to be done, even to determine what type of condition the building is, is get the junk out of there before you actually get in it and see what's going on over there. It seems like it's not out there, right?
I don't know.
Is there any consideration about getting another fire station or anything like that? Fire, any issues out of that building?
We talked about that, too, about, you know, if we could put, if we could, what I would like to do, and this is a concern Jeb, too, what I had proposed a couple of years ago. And I thought we were going to be able to, the county was going to be able to return or retain the, shoot, the arbor funds that St. Charles had gotten as a town. I thought we were going to be able to retain that once they lost their township. And I even, you know, the board even agreed with me to go ahead if we did get that, just to spend it on St. Charles, because it wouldn't have been their money. And I was proposing, you know, building some small structure there, nothing big and fancy, just something small enough to put, to house a first responder, a fire truck, and one of their rescue units, so it'd be inside all the time. But now that, I don't know how that would work out now with this ALS stuff. From what I understand about all this ALS stuff, I mean, that would work to be able to put it over there.
Basically.
And would they not have to have their box over there, too? Or would it be...
And the regulations, the truck box stays locked in the truck now. They're not, we can't, used to, we had extra boxes at the station where I worked at and everything. Now they have to stay locked in the truck. The truck, well, the box is used or it's recycled, whatever, expired, has to stay on the truck due to regulations until a new, new thing's kicking into play in November. But studio, the box will have to stay on the truck, it's going to have to be maintained all the way through. As long as it's just mine, but two locks and approved seal lock, it can do whatever.
Well, to make a long story short, we weren't able to retain that money. The state got that, the state took it back, or...
Well, they sent it back.
Yeah, sent it back to the feds. So we didn't get that money. And, but that was our big go-to plan. But, you know, it may be something, if that building is not salvageable, that we may, you know, have to look at, but maybe a mail building or a block building, whatever, is most cost-effective for.
Just my experience with what we, what I've been with with fire racing and everything, I didn't know that the insurance rates, like for the ice, the ice upgrade for the, for the people of St. Charles has dropped on account of the removal of the fire department, what had been done years ago. And some people were having trouble getting insurance. So I'd like to make them, somewhere, we can give their fire station that burned the truck out there, and way those people can enjoy those insurance threats again, where they can have better insurance. And that closure fire protection.
And that would work for a better, you know, yeah.
Got their number, more than anything. Client had asked, I think the past board had scheduled him to go every so often, and that building was one of them, to check buildings in this and that every so often. And he was talking, his schedule, he's got the rundown keys to do that, to check them all. And the majority of those buildings, the guys over here are mowing those buildings, at least during the mowing season. They're going to be at the boat houses. That's some of them that he has to check. I can't remember. But anyway, the guys are mowing. They're out there at these buildings. Could they just do that, do, you know, do a quick little check of them and give him some relief? Because he said he was, you know, there's more and more going on in his, in his department. He said there, if, you know, if we could lessen his, it's like he had a quarterly checking of these buildings. And back to the building up there, is there part of the tower it's in that thing? Isn't it just the loading board?
Yeah, just the control.
So you would have to keep a building there of some sort, won't you, for that?
That's all I have. We just need to go in under investments in public funds?
Investing in public funds and personnel.
Okay. Okay, I'll just go in close sessions, under employment personnel 2.2-37181. And investing in public funds, contracts under 2.2-371886. Got a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?